We will call the Ashland County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Roll call.
Ray.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Who fall? Who fall?
He was online, but I don't know he signed off.
Thank you. Frannick. Liz Frannick. Thank you.
Here.
Will Harm.
Here.
Stendor.
Here.
Reamer.
Here.
Gusev.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Vita.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Hader.
Here.
Mindel.
Here.
Murdick.
Here.
Ellifson.
Here.
Trudeau excused. Negro.
Here.
Metzinger excused. Campbell.
Here.
Eighteen present.
Okay. We will have a moment of silence, but before we do that, and then we'll do the pledge. Just in case anybody doesn't know, Carl Cooley, who is a county board supervisor from down south, passed away. So just in case anybody didn't know that, so we'll have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one eighth of indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Ray moves to approve. Mr. Ray makes the motion. Mr. Stendor.
Ronald Second.
Ronald Stendor seconds. Any changes? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carry. Public hearing. Notice of a public hearing for the JFK Airport.
Blake will make a motion to have notice of public hearing.
Thank you. Blake makes a motion to have the public hearing as her second.
I'll say.
Mr. Reamer second, sit. All those in favor say aye. Pose. Okay. We're in the public hearing. Does anybody want to address this item? And if not, we'll keep it open until the end of the meeting if we don't have anyone in person or online. Seeing or hearing none, we will keep the hearing open until the end of the meeting. Public comment. Is there any public comment in the room or online? We're looking for if there's anybody that has public comment at this time. No public comment being heard. Thank you. Presentations. Presentation by Sean Lentz of Ellers Incorporated regarding City of Ashland Tax Increment District Number Eleven. It's. Okay, Sean, are you online?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Would it be best if I shared my screen? Or Dan, do you have the presentation and would want to go through it? What works best on your end?
We have a presentation right here. If it's the one you sent me earlier.
Yeah, it, it, correct, that is. So why don't I just, if you've got it and already have it on the screen at the meeting, why don't I just go right through that then? And I'll ask you to change the pages as we move through.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, as introduced by the chairman, I'm Sean Lentz with Ellers. We're municipal public finance advisors. And we work with communities, villages, cities, school districts, counties, on various economic development, bonding, financial planning and investment areas. And we have been recently working with the city of Ashland on the creation of Tax Increment District Number Eleven. Dan thought it would be helpful for the county board if we would do the presentation that we shared with a group that he was sitting on called the Joint Review Board. It's made up of members of all of the taxing jurisdictions that overlap the city of Ashland to provide all of those jurisdictions the opportunity to understand more about tax increment financing and then ultimately to have a vote on the creation of the Tax Increment District. The presentation that I will briefly take you through this morning is what I spoke to in discussing TID Number Eleven with this Joint Review Board a couple of weeks ago at the, at City Hall in Ashland. So where I wanted to start out with is a couple of slides just for those in the audience that have no background on tax increment financing and might benefit from knowing a little bit more about it. So if we could go to that slide number two. There we go, perfect, thank you. What we're looking at in this particular situation is there is an area in the city where the city council and staff would like to see the location updated, renewed and redeveloped. And so what we're considering the use of tax increment financing for is to provide the necessary infrastructure upgrades and improvements as well as incentives to promote redevelopment on this site that is consistent with the city of Ashland's goals and vision for ongoing development and redevelopment in the city. And the tool, Tax Increment Financing, is a tool that allows primarily cities and villages to capture tax revenue from new development or new construction or redevelopment and specifically capture that new tax revenue stream to fund the necessary incentives and infrastructure to get the redevelopment moving and moving forward in the first place. Okay, if we can go to the next slide. Thank you very much. This slide is a graph or chart representation of how tax increment financing works in practice. Step one, when you create a tax increment district is you define a contiguous area within the boundaries of the city. And then you determine what is the current taxable value of that property that you propose to put into a tax increment district. Under tax increment language, that would be the base value or baseline property value. Now, that value is currently taxed and a portion of the annual tax revenue goes to each of the taxing jurisdictions. And that will continue into the future. There won't be any change to that. What's, what's unique about a tax increment district is when one is created, any new construction that results in additional value up and above the base value, that value, and it's represented in, in kind of the purplish color on the chart, that value is categorized as increment value. Increment value is taxed at the exact same rate as any other value in the city. But instead of tax revenue collected on increment value going to the city's general fund, the county, the school district and the tech college, while the tax increment district is in place, a hundred percent of that new tax revenue from the new value created goes to a special fund that the city would have. And in this case, it would be called the Tax Increment Eleven Fund. And those dollars would be used to pay for or repay debt issued to provide the necessary infrastructure improvements and incentives to get this development or redevelopment going and started in the first place. And after those dollars have provided enough revenues to pay back the expenditures that promoted that redevelopment, those infrastructure incentive expenditures, then the tax increment district closes. And at that point, a hundred percent of both the base value and the captured increment value is now tax based that all of the jurisdictions benefit from and collect a hundred percent of the tax revenue from, to pay for your general expenditures of each of those jurisdictions. So in the short run, while the necessary costs are being repaid to promote the redevelopment in the site that the city has outlined, all of the jurisdictions, including the city's general fund, are not collecting that tax revenue. But once those expenditures have been repaid, then in the long run, all of the jurisdictions are benefiting from not just the original tax base that was there, but this new additional redeveloped tax base. And again, that's represented by the green section. And the whole underpinning of this tool, Tax Increment Financing, is but for the use of this tool, that baseline value would very likely stay exactly as it is right now. And that none of the, then, none of the jurisdictions would ever benefit from an increase in taxable value because that value would not have been created. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So the, the next slides going forward to the end of the presentation are much more specific to the proposed TID Number Eleven rather than just general information about how Tax Increment Financing works in Wisconsin. What you're seeing on the screen right now is the proposed boundaries of the Tax Increment District. And as I'd mentioned, the Tax Increment Districts have to be a contiguous area. The plan of the city is to promote redevelopment on the large orange area at the top and the smaller rectangle at the bottom. But because a TID district needs to be contiguous, we have included some homesteads in between in order to make it a contiguous area. And this is all around, along Beazer Avenue in the city of Ashland. Now, there is an immediate potential development of up to a, well, potentially they're saying up to a hundred and fifty units, but a hundred and thirty is what is being promoted at this point. A hundred and thirty residential units on the area on the top of the map you're looking at, which is open and property currently. The goal is to redevelop that site and the site on the, on the south or bottom end in order to take those blighted areas and redevelop those. And while doing so, increase residential housing opportunities with, within the city. The district itself, there's a couple of different types of districts that a city or village can create. Industrial TIDs, mixed use, tax increment districts. Or in this case, we're looking at a blight elimination tax increment district. And a finding has been made on the bulk of the property in proposed TID Eleven that it meets that blighted area definition. And we, we don't, we don't have to have a hundred percent of the area meet the, the definition. It's just fifty percent. And that northern top end and southern end are where we're primarily focused on the blight determination as well as the redevelopment incentives. Okay, we can go forward to the next slide. This next slide is to give the county board a sense of the projects that are projected to be included in the project plan. There is a larger project plan, about a forty page document that the city has reviewed. That plan is summarized in this presentation that I'm providing to you this morning. One of the things we have to put into the plan is potential project costs that we expect to charge to the Tax Increment District. And so what we've summarized here are the various project costs. Now, I should mention there's a Phase One, which are infrastructure and development incentives to get the hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty unit apartment building. Those are project costs that are being analyzed currently to be included in the plan. And the city's working on a development agreement with the development group. So the three point two and three point five million fall into that category. The other project costs are more preliminary project costs over the life of the Tax Increment District. The Tax Increment District has a maximum term of twenty seven years. And in the first twenty two of those twenty seven years, the city would have the ability to go proceed with projects and charge them to the TID fund to be repaid. So what you're seeing on the bullets, the fourth through the sixth bullet, street and utility infrastructure improvements, park improvements, development incentives, housing and business development grants, those are all potential additional project costs that would have to go through the city's normal process to be, to proceed with and, and move forward with. But in order to have those eligible to be a part of the Tax Increment Plan, they need to be in the project plan now. So they, they represent future phases and additional projects that the city might do over the entire life of the Tax Increment District. And those projects, again, will occur either within the, the boundaries of the district or within a half mile of the district, which is allowable project expenditures in a Tax Increment District under state law. The, the way these project costs will be paid for is generally in two different approaches. One is that the city would use either dollars available or borrowing to fund them and then use the tax increment revenue to repay themselves through an interfund advance or to repay debt that they issue for infrastructure costs or incentives. The other tool that is often used to pay for tax increment eligible costs is a pay as you go strategy. And in that strategy, if the city is working with a development group, they will pay for the tax increment eligible expenses upfront. And the city will enter into an agreement with them that if that increment value is created, the city will use the tax revenue from that new increment value to repay on a pay as you go annual basis the expenditures that the development group incurred in order for the project to be able to, to proceed. And the last thing I would mention on this slide is all of the projects, by being in the project plan, make them eligible to be repaid with the tax increment revenues. But it is, they, they all are implemented on a case by case basis. And just because they're in the plan is not an absolute certainty that those projects will proceed. The city will review each one and their potential for success on a case by case basis. Okay, we could move to the next slide. Thank you. So this slide, it's probably a little difficult to, to see, but I'll give you the high points and the bullets. This is a slide that ties into that chart I talked with you earlier. But this one is specific for a proposed Tax Increment District Number Eleven. In preliminary discussions with the city assessor and with the development group, group over the life of the district on the north end or the top end of the, the boundaries I showed you, that apartment building project is expected to be somewhere between thirty to thirty six million in value, depending on the, the final size and number of apartments. That would be new additional increment value up and above the value that this, that's there currently. And then we've made estimates in later years, twenty twenty nine and twenty thirty two. Should development proceed to move forward and redevelop the site at the, at the bottom end of the proposed Tax Increment District, we're looking at a potential of another eight million. So all told, that would be forty four million in new taxable value generated in the proposed district up and above the value that's there now. So this would be forty four million in new taxable value. And if the Tax Increment District ran its entire life, that would generate nineteen point two million in revenues for the Tax Increment District to use to repay expenditures to promote those redevelopment initiatives and to create that forty four million in new taxable value. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Now, this next slide is another requirement of Wisconsin statutes that be included in the project plan. This is a, what we call our cash flow summary of the Tax Increment District. So on the left side, in the orange section, are the projected tax increment revenues from the previous page. And then in the green section are a estimate of all of those expenditures that I discussed with you on the previous two pages that would be involved in promoting the redevelopment of the properties in Tax Increment District Eleven. And then either on a pay as you go basis, repaying expenditures and or repaying debt or other project costs on an annual basis involved with promoting the redevelopment of TID Eleven and achieving that forty four million in new value. And on the far right side of the page is the annual and cumulative balances of the Tax Increment District over its life. Important to note here is in the cumulative column, you'll see in the early couple of years, as the district's just getting started, the, the city will be advancing some funds to start the process of creating the district and will be in a deficit situation. But then over time, as development begins to occur and that new tax revenue is generated and captured, those expenditures are paid back such that all of the costs are paid back within the maximum life of the, of the district. So that at the end, there isn't a deficit. Now, in a worst case scenario, if there is a deficit, the risk of that deficit is not, is on the, is on the city. It's not on the other taxing jurisdictions. If, if by chance that were to occur, the city would have to cover that deficit from other funds of the city. And that's why, as I discussed with the Joint Review Board, the plan is a very important element. This cash flow is a very important element. But what's most important in the success of a Tax Increment District is ongoing maintenance and review of how the district is producing and how it is cash flowing from year to year. And so what we've done, as we've worked with the city in other tax increment districts in the past, is we have annual reports and reviews by the council. The Joint Review Board is also involved. There's an annual meeting so that the other jurisdictions are also made aware of the status of the Tax Increment District in terms of financial as well as its goals to achieve the redevelopment that is the whole purpose for it being created in the first place. Okay, we can move to the next slide. Thank you. This, this final slide with material to review is just to give the county board a understanding of the timeline for the creation and the steps involved. This one has been updated a little bit since when Dan and I met at April first. But on the first, we had that initial meeting to introduce the concept of creating TID Eleven for the city to the overlapping taxing jurisdiction. So Dan was at that meeting and asked questions and, and probed about what this district would mean. And that's where he had suggested it might be helpful for the county board to know a little bit more about TAF, hence the discussion this morning. Later on the first, the city's plan commission had a public hearing where the public was able to ask questions about the proposed redevelopment of that site and the use of Tax Increment Financing. At the end of that public hearing, the plan commission unanimously voted to move ahead with the creation and recommending the creation of TID Eleven to the city council. A couple of weeks ago, on the fifteenth, I met with the city council. Again, we discussed the creation of TID Eleven. We went through some of the same material you're hearing this morning. And at the end, the council voted to proceed with the creation of the boundaries of Tax Increment District Number Eleven as well as the project plan. And that leads us to what would be the final step in the creation of the district. On May twenty second, we will be having a final meeting or a second meeting of the Joint Review Board. On here, of course, it says to be determined, but we're planning on, on that on, on May twenty second. And at that point, the, there will be a vote of the Joint Review Board. So the county will have a vote, school district, tech college, the city. And then there, that group picked a fifth member, an at-large member at the initial Joint Review Board meeting. Those folks will have a vote and assuming approval of the district, all of the documentation would go forward to the state of Wisconsin for a final processing of the creation of, of Tax Increment District Number Eleven. But that discussion is yet to happen on the twenty second. So we won't know until that date about whether the district has been approved by all the jurisdictions. And again, I think Dan thought it would be very helpful so for the board to know a little bit more about this. Hopefully this achieved that goal. And I'd, I'd be very happy if, if there is time and if the chairman deems it a good idea to answer any questions that the board might have about either tax increment in general or about a proposed District Eleven in, in Ashland.
Okay. This is Pat. Can we go back to screen page three, please? Dan? Or other? Just up to page three. So on this diagram, I think there's a couple of things to note. And one is in the lower right, the, the base value continues to be part of the general tax base. So the county would still get its taxes based on what is currently there. But that would be frozen at that assessed value going forward from this point in time. Likely it would increase in assessed value a bit between now and twenty fifty three. But the big part of this is the old Roffers Switching Yard. It's a big vacant area. The city has done remediation there, removing topsoil. There's a cap on it. The city has tried for years to try to redevelop that with the goal of housing. So right now, it's just a big vacant parcel that's got some issues as far as redeveloping if you want to go down below grade and do anything. So they haven't been able to get anybody to do anything for more than a decade there. So real, realistically, the tax base isn't going to increase hardly any at all there. City uses it to dump snow right now and lets contractors park some stuff in the summer. So this is really exciting. I think that they're going to put this apartment building there and increase the tax base. So we'll still get what we've been getting on that part. And then the other part of this is the CISA building where the library is right now. The person that bought that and started in on that has found that, that's, and he's experienced. But he's got a very big project on his hands. And if that gets redeveloped like he's looking at, that would be good for Ashland too. And if that gets redeveloped like he's looking at, that would be good for Ashland, too. So I'm fully on board with supporting this. This will be really good for the city, but also for the county. And as far as taxes go, will be froze where we're at. But those properties aren't going to increase much unless this TIF district is approved. So this is really good news for us, I think.
Thank you, Pat. Lee?
Hey, thanks for coming here today, Sean, and walking us through this. So as an Ashland County resident and as well as Ashland, the city of Ashland, I guess the question for me becomes who is going to be investing in this property? Because I know along the way, the value added gets increased to forty four million. Is that the developer? Is that the city that is expected to invest and maintain?
Yeah, the forty four million that I referenced earlier would be private development that the developers are putting their assets and either direct equity into the project, their contribution and or potentially going to their financing sources, say their bank or other private investors to construct the forty four million in new value. So that would be their investment in the projects.
And at the end of the day, the ownership, the fee simple ownership would be that company then throughout the life of that project? They would have ownership of that apartment complex and that property?
Yeah, that's correct. The apartment building on the top end of the boundaries of the district, the project that's really moving ahead right now that your other member of the board just described in more detail a few seconds ago, that will be privately owned and maintained. That's not a public building. That will be a private building and they will pay taxes just like anyone else in the city or the county.
And as a, you know, person who lives here, I'm assuming that the city's done their due diligence on this developer to validate, you know, the bank financing, the wherewithal. They've done these projects, I've heard, in Duluth Superior Market, so I have full confidence. But I guess what happens if ten years down the road, this starts going a little sideways, right? You know, I think that's my big concern is Ashland has some up in the air issues currently with Northland closing. And so I just want to make sure as long as the developer owns this and they've been underwritten, I feel fairly good about this project.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, there's an ongoing finalization of a development agreement. The developer would like to proceed here in twenty twenty five with the project. They've done, I assist the city of Superior, so I'm aware of some of their projects that this group has been involved with and they've been, I think, very successful in some apartment and other projects in the city of Superior. So I think they've got a pretty solid tax record, but the city's attorney is working with their attorneys on a development agreement. And some of the development, you know, who's responsible for this and that is all being worked out. It's very similar to other projects. This one obviously is on a larger scale with a bigger hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty unit building than maybe some. A couple of years ago, as an example for the county board here, the city used tax increment financing in what's currently called tax increment district number ten to do the hotel project, the downtown hotel cobblestone, I think, project. So that obviously was a very successful project, redeveloped an area in the downtown. But it's on a smaller scale than this project is certainly. But the concept is the same. It was using incentives and infrastructure improvements to redevelop an area in the downtown of the city that needed it and also meet a goal of additional hotel rooms for visitors coming into Ashland.
I know this is overdoing it, but I just got one. So our city is issuing bonds quite rapidly. Ellers helps advise. How does this impact our ability to bond as a city going forward? Does it impact? I guess I know debt to our current city administration isn't too concerning, but I think myself personally am a little concerned. So how does this fit into our future as far as issuing additional debt at the city level?
Yeah, the county and the city are under a limit, under state law, for the use of general obligation debt, which is the most common and lowest cost borrowing tool that the city has. The city will still be quite a ways significantly below the limit that they have, even with some of the larger projects like the library project that they've taken on with this project. But it is an ongoing discussion in the city about potentially using other tools of borrowing than general obligation debt for this project or for others in the future to make sure that that doesn't get stretched too far. The other element that we're talking about on a long-term basis, an overall basis for the city, is the development agreement to ensure that the new debt, that any new debt that the city would issue, there's a solid development agreement to do everything possible to ensure that it's tax increment revenue from this redevelopment that pays that debt, not having to use other funds of the city.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Negro?
Hello, I don't know if everybody's ready yet, but I am ready. So I would like to make a motion that we support resolution R zero four dash two two zero two five dash one five zero one, resolution supporting the creation of city of Ashland TID eleven.
Laura, that's not till later in the agenda.
Yeah, that'll come up on the agenda in a few minutes.
All right. So we're doing this in the weird order. I guess I should have brought that up.
Yeah, this is just explaining what the district is.
Oh, thank you, Laura.
So people ask questions.
Mr. Posey?
Supervisor Franek.
Go ahead, Liz.
Hi, thank you for coming today, Mr. Lenz. This was a very good presentation and this is well needed in our city and everything. I, you know, we know we need the housing development and everything and we need to get these areas ready for development. My question is, and I'm assuming already, that any cleanup has been or any soil testing or anything has been done already? And if not, who is responsible for that? And if you could just address that issue, thank you.
Yeah, I think anything beyond what was already cleaned up on the site is being discussed as part of the development agreement. Some of the incentives and infrastructure improvements, probably more in the incentive category in order to make the project proceed, are paying for costs to make the site a hundred percent redevelopable. And so I do think, I would, what I would suggest that if there's specific questions about that, Steve and other, Brant and Julie at the city would be in the best position to answer those, maybe as well as the city attorney. But I will say to your question, it's my, well, I know, it's not my understanding. I know that some of the incentives are to have the development group make the site a hundred percent redevelopable and suitable. And some of those costs are being considered as part of the development agreement. And again, that's another reason why the TID is being used because we do have some extraordinary costs to make that site able to be redeveloped in its entirety.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Posey?
I do read this as a good proposal, but I do have two questions. The first is, there doesn't seem to be any estimate in this of the increased cost pressures on school and county and city budgets for increased students, senior services, transportation services. This is not a hotel that's bringing in temporary visitors. This is housing that could bring in like two hundred additional residents, maybe sixty new students, maybe fifty old senior citizens who need services. And we provide these services through the county and the city. So why is there no estimate of those increased costs during the TID period? And then my second question will be a short one, just whether there are any historical preservation issues with the old Beazer School Building?
Yeah, the first question, I've had the pleasure of working with communities on creating tax increment districts. I've been at Ellers about thirty, a little more than thirty years. Specific references to the question you're asking are not typically in a project plan. They're not a required element for inclusion. But you're exactly right. Those sort of challenges are a discussion generally of the joint review board. The school was a member and an active participant at the initial meeting. And as I understand it, they are looking at some of these potential issues. I think, generally speaking, Dan could speak to this, too. I thought they were positive and thought this would be helpful to the challenges they're facing. But I do know that they are intending to have a similar discussion to what the county board is having today and will probably be researching the impact of this redevelopment specifically on their needs and what they see coming out of it. But I haven't had any additional questions from the ones that were asked at the joint review board by the school board.
George, I can address some of it. So as far as the school goes, the school will benefit immediately as soon as the building's up. And that has to do with basically the school funding formula. School gets around eleven thousand dollars per student they have at the school. So if they have more students, they get more state aid. So it actually helps them with funding and being able to make sure they can keep adequate staff. The other thing it does for the school is it provides a decent home, a livable home for their children, for the children who are in school, which provides a better education in general when kids have a better home life. So that's how the school is looking at it. They see this as a net benefit to them and providing better education at the school. As far as the town goes, there won't be much impact on the town because all the developments in the city. There may be a little bit more traffic on the road, but we're talking two hundred people. But most of those people live locally already. Their people are just going to be moving to better homes. So overall, this could actually lower the price of rents, which will be good for everyone.
What about the incentives for those private property owners in the middle of that district? No, they're included to make it a contiguous district, but are there incentives for them to make improvements on their property at the same time?
Yeah, I didn't go into it real significantly. But if you go back to slide number, I think it's five, the one TID eleven anticipated projects. I think, yeah, I'm sorry, it's the slide number on the bottom. It's actually, yeah, six of eleven, thank you. So you see to the board members' question, there's a section there, the final bullet point, housing and business development grants. That was included should there be either desires to create a fund that the TID would provide funding for to do improvements to housing and or businesses either in the district or within a half mile of the district. So I do think there's an opportunity for the specific properties that you mentioned, as well as others, to benefit from a successful tax increment district to see some renewing or redevelopment of properties that maybe just, you know, with age have begun to get worn down or multiple owners or whatever the situation might be. There is a budget in the plan to address some of those challenges that you've brought up.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, it's also important to note that those residents would not see a tax increase. They'd be paying the exact same taxes they pay now.
That was going to be my question, too.
And the only way they would see a tax increase is if they made an improvement to their house. So say they put an addition onto their house. They're going to see a tax increase because they did an improvement, just like you or I would. But otherwise, they will be treated exactly the same as they're treated now.
Supervisor Negro? Your hand is up.
Yes. Sean, have you seen projects like this cycle some of the older populations' housing into something that could possibly be having improvements, you know, besides these projects that are currently proposed, some of these others inside of that TID that might bring more income into the county and city?
Yeah, so as I'd mentioned, the plan envisions projects both in the district as well as within a half mile. Now, I'll try to use an example to get to your question. Let's say that I was a business owner and I had property that was within a half mile of the district, but not in the district. And I said, I came to the city and said, you know what? I'm going to buy this building and start a business here and I want to redevelop the building somewhat because it's kind of in a rough shape. Now, if I were to get a temporary grant or loan from the city out of the TID for that, I do the work and my building, which let's say I bought it for two hundred thousand and through the improvements, it goes up to three hundred thousand in taxable value. Because that building is being redeveloped outside of the boundaries of the TID, in my example, that additional hundred thousand in value would immediately go to all of the jurisdictions as an increase in tax base for them. The other area is, you know, if you see improvements in renewing, oftentimes that can lead to more surrounding development or improvements in the area. You know, one project leads to another. I would imagine with an apartment building, and I've seen this in other locations, with an apartment building bringing more people to this location, that there'll be entrepreneurial folks in and around that area who want to take advantage of that larger mass of people in that area and try to do additional business and other opportunities as an offshoot of this primary project. So I do think there'll be spin-off opportunities that all the taxing jurisdictions will benefit from.
Thank you.
Okay. So you know other hands? Oh, Mr. Kenny?
Sean, as long as you're here, we all know Northland College is closing. We don't know what the future holds for that property. But with TID districts, there's a limit to what a city can have. And if the city were interested in creating a TID district with the Northland campus, would they still have capacity, if this one's created, to do that?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Let me just, while I've got you here, want to double check my numbers. Yeah, so currently, there's a test called the twelve percent test, which the test is, once a community has increment value from the sum of all of their TIDs, in the case of Ashland, the only district they have right now is TID number ten. But if you were to sum the increment value of TID ten and right now, as the only district of that twelve percent test, we're only at one point one three percent. And so I think even with the creation of TID eleven, we won't see an increase in that increment value till the apartment buildings are completed. But that will start to increase that percentage. I think we've got plenty of room yet, though, to consider, should the city want to, using tax increment financing on the college site if a redevelopment opportunity has some possibility there. So I think the city is in a good position to continue to use the tool for areas that are challenged if they want to, given the fact that they only have the one district currently. And they're well below that twelve percent threshold, which then starts to limit your ability to do new TIDs in the city.
Good, thank you. Well, Sean, thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, pleasure. Yeah, pleasure speaking with all of you this morning. And I, then I commend Dan for the idea. I don't, I have done these in a couple of other instances. I always think it's a good idea to help people understand what, what is being proposed so that they can feel like they have an active role in it and, and view things from an educated basis.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep, you bet. Everyone have a good rest of the day. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we have a presentation by World Architects regarding space needs study.
Do you guys want to come up to the table here? And there's some microphones. And Heather, Heather can go through the thing for you. Oh. Let's see. Okay, yeah, she can connect on that, yeah.
Just make sure if you push that middle button, if that red light comes on.
Or she can share her screen through the call because she's on the Zoom mic as well. So either way. Yeah, just share it through that. Dan, did you want to give any sort of intro here ahead of time or?
Hey, well, we have some representatives, some world architects here. They're the ones doing our space needs study. Part of the plan was to do a mid-review with the county board. And so they're here to do that mid-review.
We're just not showing what's being shared. There we go. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Board, for having us here this morning. I'm Jonathan Loze with World Architects. I have Kelly Schneider here with me as well. As Dan said, we went through, we've kind of started this master planning process where we're looking at all facilities. I'll just jump to the agenda quick and kind of just walk you through what we're going to talk about today. So just a quick overview of the planning process. We'll talk about something that's very important to that, which is the guiding principles that sort of sets the stage and foundation for where we might want to go with outcomes of the study. We'll talk about some survey outcomes and, and what that means. And then look at probably the two most important kind of pieces of data that come out of this. One is the facility condition assessment, so looking at the actual nuts and bolts of all the buildings that you've got. And then the second piece is the space needs assessment and projected space needs. So that's looking at the adequacy of the space to really support the individual departments and staff that are within there and looking at maybe potentially not just those deficiencies, but if there's some future changes that might be needed to help support future hiring or any sort of departmental changes. And then lastly, we'll just talk about kind of where we're at with schedule and maybe offer it up for some questions. Certainly, as we're going through a lot of this information, you'll see a lot of just data that we've collected. If you want to stop us and ask questions along the way, I don't mind it being interrupted. My mouth, once it opens, it just kind of keeps going. So don't feel rude if you just stop me. So with that, we'll go on to that kind of overview of the planning process. We've kind of got typically kind of a six step process right now. We're through that or at that sort of step three. What's important before we start to represent some potential options and work with our core planning group on how to respond to some of the needs that we're looking at is just finding consensus on that need. So first, we start with setting some goals and objectives. We developed those guiding principles that I talked about. And then we kind of internally gather some data. And one of those things is looking at some surveys with individual departments. So we meet with each individual department and talk about their space and what they might see in the future and sort of deficiencies that might exist today. And so step three is really where we're at now. And I don't think we're necessarily looking for any sort of action item from the board today, but really just sort of general agreement that these needs exist and an understanding that we're going to move forward with this core planning group to start developing those options. So with that, I'll jump into those guiding principles that were developed with the core planning group. You know, I, I'm not a big fan of reading bullet points off of PowerPoint slides, but I'm going to, at least for this particular slide, just because I think it's important to hear from our group, that core planning group that was developed, what, what it is that we're trying to accomplish as a part of this. So create appropriate workspace and support space to allow optimal workflow of each department while accounting for future growth. Create shared space for all staff to encourage community and provide common resources. Provide additional meeting space for both staff and public of varying capacities. Provide a welcoming and inviting facility that is customer centric and friendly. Retain the historic courthouse building. Identify and provide varying safety and security needs throughout the county. And then outcomes should have a fiscally responsible approach, preserving county assets as much as possible. And create a twenty year county master plan that addresses priority projects. So, you know, as the county was looking to bring on sort of a professional to go through this study, there was some scope of work that was identified. But when we started meeting with the core planning group, you know, some of this probably was similar to what was anticipated. But really, this is sort of the background behind where the study is going to go and what we're trying to accomplish at the end. Any questions about any of those statements? Does that, any opposition? So then I'll just kind of move into the next piece, which is talking about the survey outcomes. Again, we basically send out a hard copy or electronic survey that they fill out. It gives us a sense of kind of what their space is, how their department functions within the county. Because each county kind of operates a little bit differently with how they divide up tasks between different departments. But then really digging into the space that they're in and whether or not it supports the mission that their department has and if we foresee any potential changes as well. So just areas within the courthouse, there were some concerns with the lack of safety and security. Certainly HVAC and space for public waiting. And then just privacy when handling confidential information. So those are all sort of items that were identified within the courthouse as being concerns. And then the sheriff's office and jail, certainly some acoustical issues there between offices. And then the lack of storage and staff space was identified. And as you know, there's some separation issues within the jail, just getting proper classification between inmates and some upgrades that are needed today. At forestry, there's a lack of vehicle and equipment storage space. So they're just kind of out of room with what they've got. For Health and Human Services, certainly a lack of storage, meeting and office space. I would say it's kind of a pretty, just general need throughout that department in terms of staff, office, storage, kind of everywhere there's pinch points is where they have concerns. At highway, just a lack of meeting space and covered equipment storage. So some of the stuff gets set outside and then some security concerns as well. For land conversation, there's some concerns regarding rented space and lack of storage, office space, and then just a public waiting area. So again, these are just some bullet points behind those meetings that we had. Certainly as a part of our kind of full-on final report, we'll have all of our meeting minutes and those survey outcomes included. But out of those discussions, we really start to look at the square footage that they're all in. And we start to look at what would ideal square footage for those departments be? So we're not just taking sort of their, necessarily their wish list, but I think our core planning group has been sort of the litmus test for making sure, you know, Dan's not asking for a hot tub in his office or something like that. So trying to, you know, go through, oh, that's in the budget already, sorry. So trying to go through with that core planning group and be kind of a filter for information is very helpful for us. But also, you know, as a firm that really works only with public sector and has gone through a lot of county master planning, we kind of know what makes sense with different departments and what may not. And so I think there's a good sort of progression of ensuring that the ideal and the needed space that has been proposed really is in some solid background and has been reviewed pretty thoroughly, I think. So there's sort of an comparison between what the existing spaces that they have and what that space need is. And that need is really a compilation of two things I think I've talked about a little bit. But what are they deficient in today? And do they anticipate any changes in the future? And so that kind of compiles that end piece of it.
So we can jump into the existing facility condition assessment. So we were able to go to all of the different departments and buildings in the county and do a walkthrough alongside the conversations that we had with departments to gauge how tight they were and kind of the, yeah, condition of the existing space. So starting with the courthouse, there's quite a bit of water damage that we saw throughout the building, which is starting to impact some structural integrity in the attic and some finishes. General concern with building security, especially during court hearings. Similar to that, the secure entrance and lack of holding cells for courts. There's a lack of egress with one stairwell. That stairwell is not ADA compliant. With the height of the railing, toilet rooms are not ADA compliant. Some sound concerns with radiators and temperature control issues in departments, which can be disruptive to staff. Lack of privacy and confidentiality within offices, shared spaces. You know, not really many common meeting rooms that can be used outside of department spaces. No break room. Each department kind of has their own like mini fridge that they use, which works, but is not ideal. And then there's no fire protection. Water heater is outdated. And then there are some other HVAC concerns regarding cooling and heating. And then no exit lights. So not all of these are requirements code wise, but they are things that affect the livability for staff and public being in the space. Moving on to Health and Human Services. Like Jonathan mentioned, more of the concerns there are regarding space. They use the hallways for a lot of storage because they don't have storage spaces for supplies that they provide to families visiting. The break room is very undersized for the number of staff that uses space. There are some finishes that are deteriorating and some systems that are nearing the end of their life that need to be upgraded at some point. Sheriff's Office and Jail. Jonathan mentioned acoustics between the offices. Some temperature control in offices with the windows as well. There's some issues in the garages and the some of the meeting spaces with concrete work and, and block walls that are starting to crack. And then again, an outdated heating system. Air handler unit and makeup air unit are nearing the end of their lifecycle. And then one of the bigger concerns that I think is being addressed soon is the day rooms are unable to purge exhaust, which is concerning for staff and security, not being able to use pepper spray or something in the cells. Highway shops. They have a fairly small meeting slash break room in their main office. Doesn't really allow them to have large staff meetings. So that's one of the concerns of theirs. In terms of garages, they've got a salt shed here in Ashland that is nearing the end of its life. And one of the buildings in Glidden is also getting fairly old. Forestry is in pretty good condition with the renovation that happened a few years ago. One of their bigger concerns is the snowmobile alliance utilizing half of their garage space. So maybe looking at an agreement between the groups there. But space wise, they're doing okay. And then land conservation, I think the biggest concern is that it's a leased space. And I'm looking at not having any county departments in rented space, but rather in, in county owned buildings. And the space that they're in is drastically undersized too. So looking at something that fills the need for staff and public alike.
So as we looked at just sort of those infrastructure needs, we kind of met with that core planning group and discussed sort of where the priority issues were. So that sort of the courthouse was in that priority one. Sheriff's and jail space was in priority one. I think it'll kind of move back to priority three, once that purge exhaust system is addressed. In priority two is Health and Human Services. And then kind of as you look further out, the highway shops and forestry is kind of in that priority four or five range. So just kind of looking at the overall picture of where we think the highest needs are, not only from our perspective, but from that core planning group as well. That's kind of the categories that these buildings fell into. So then kind of as I talked about with the space deficiencies, there's that sort of existing usable area and then the projected need. By and large, most of the square footages we're looking at here are, you'll see USF, which is usable square footage. And that's really sort of in the, the larger industry of space, that's kind of the rentable square footage. So it's not necessarily the size of your building, but it's kind of the, the area that each department actually uses and, and has staff in. So that's kind of the most useful tool to compare existing to the need because that just speeds to direct space that staff need. It's not taking into account sort of like public bathrooms and mechanical rooms and janitor's closets and hallways and things like that. So, you know, if there's questions about that, we can get further into it. But there's just sort of different iterations of how we calculate square footage. And this is the most impactful in terms of looking at comparing different departmental space. So at courts, the existing usable area is about four thousand usable square feet. Looking at the projected need, it goes up to about seventy one hundred. I think a big part of that is just having sort of accessibility and staff needs addressed within the courtrooms in their space. Court administrations at eighteen hundred with a projected need of about twenty eight or twenty nine hundred. District Attorney, eleven hundred with a projected need of twenty seven hundred. And then some other departments within the courthouse. So child support is right around a thousand, looking at the need of closer to fifteen hundred. Um is right around a thousand, looking at the need of um closer to fifteen hundred, um the treasures at. Um just over eleven hundred and then a projected need of fourteen hundred. The county clerk is currently at fourteen hundred with a projected need of about two thousand. And then IT um really I think has kind of just the infrastructure space that it needs, so there wasn't any sort of change in square footage there. Um as we continue down the line, so land description goes up from um right around six hundred up to nine hundred and sixty square feet. Um register of deeds is thirteen hundred and fifty up to eighteen hundred. Um UW extension or sorry, VSO office at five eighty seven goes up to around six hundred. Um the extension office is at fourteen hundred currently, um that need is at eighteen hundred. Um and then county administration currently at seven hundred and twenty goes up to nine fifty three. Um zoning is right around five hundred and that goes up to nine seventy. And then just shared spaces, so those would be like meeting spaces um that all staff. Um have the ability to use that don't fall under the specific department. Um right now that equates to about nine hundred and twenty four, and really there's a need of um closer to twenty six hundred, and I think. Um this space is an example of one of those sort of shared spaces within this um courthouse building. Um the other thing I'll say is that the projected need, while it is us looking at. Um individual spaces and offices and suggesting that. Okay, if somebody's in an eighty square foot office, that's really outside of industry standard. We would typically and we kind of have an agreement and with the core planning group on what those industry standards are. Um of being, you know, a hundred to a hundred and twenty square foot office, just as an example, so. If they're in an eighty square foot office and they're short, you know, twenty to forty square feet. Um that's what this sort of increase uh projects. Um but that increase doesn't mean that it has to change, it just means that when we look at what sort of is typical. Um for those positions that they're in, those departments. Or a meeting space that has to accommodate a certain number of people, um you know, there's just sort of. Pinch points everywhere, particularly in the courthouse, and so that's why you see. There's quite a bit of increases in each of these different departments, and it kind of adds up. But it doesn't mean that everybody's in a twenty square foot office. Um or that's what our plan is moving forward, it's just sort of us saying. This is what would be sort of projected if you tried to address all of those individual needs. When we go into sort of developing options, um not all of those needs may necessarily be addressed. Um and we will have to sort of prioritize individual departments and buildings and. And cost and take all that into account um as we filter through that process with the core planning group, so just wanted to kind of. Lay that out before I continue to um talk about all the increased needs that exist um within these different departments, so. Um jumping forward um to health and human services. Um existing area currently they're at sixty six hundred and the usable square footage um projected need is. Um closer to sixteen thousand, so again, like I said, there's just pinch points within that group. Uh really everywhere, not only are they trying to have uh more staff work um within the office and not remotely necessarily, but. Also looking at some future staff needs that they might have to hire some positions for. Out in the future, and then just um the practice of storing. Uh materials within hallways and things like that really is just a not really a safe um condition and and not secure either, so. A lot of those different things added up to a pretty um drastic increase in in the need that they've got. And if you've been in that building, I think you'd see that it's um pretty tight and tough to tough to work around. Um for land conservation, um they're currently at nine hundred and fifty usable square feet. And that projected need goes up to about twenty six hundred, which includes. Um approximately three hundred plus square feet of garage space. Um the sheriff's office in jail um is at eighteen thousand with a projected need of about twenty seven thousand. Um and then the highway um shops, uh really, there's only a slight increase at the um hybrid location where. Um there's a meeting space that's uh been requested to have that sort of all staff meeting um in the location that they're at. And then forestry, um really, they're they're kind of taking up what they are right now, but. Um if we increase from that sort of uh fifty seven hundred. Um their sort of desire would be to take over the rest of that remote garage. Um and maybe renegotiate with the snowmobile alliance. So when we looked at um sort of those space deficiencies, then we sort of started to prioritize with our core planning group as well in terms of. How would we want to address those and you know, there's there's needs everywhere, but. What are the most important things to address first, and how do you sort of start to look at not just we're addressing it all on day one? Um but a master plan where you start to address those needs over the course of a longer period of time. Um so priority one was really child support, um district attorney, and then the court administration courts. Uh health and human services and land conservation really probably getting out of a leased space for them would be ideal. Um so those are all viewed as priority one, um priority two is county administration, just some potential additional staff coming on. And then uh shared support spaces as well, so having adequate meeting spaces. Um within this building for all the different departments to be able to use. And then uh looking down to priority three, so zoning, county clerk, land description. And then also the um sheriff's office in jail is in that priority three category. Um and then priority four, UW extension, treasure and register of deeds. And lastly, priority five, um potentially addressing some needs out in the future for. Uh the VSO, Ashland, Glidden, hybrid shops, um and the forestry department as well, so. Um we don't have any necessarily years associated with all these different priorities, I think. Ultimately, when we start to generate options with the core planning group, uh we can start to look at. Um sort of when and how we would address some of those square footage needs. Um and those square footage needs would be addressed. Uh ideally in alignment with some of those uh facility deficiencies as well, so I think that's why. Um it makes sense to kind of move both of these things forward um in a study like you've um hired us to do, so thank you. Uh but to look at how do you address not just the condition of the building? Uh but how do you address the needs of the staff too, because you'd hate to, you know, renovate the space for staff. Uh but then completely forget about the HVAC systems or something like that, and now you gotta go back five years later and redo everything, so. Trying to kind of align all those different needs together, um really makes sense to have an efficient. Um and effective master plan as you move forward, and so that will, like I said, kind of. Dictate maybe how some of those priorities get categorized by year, uh by department, and then also by by building as well. Um so um schedule right now, like I said, we're kind of at that point where we're. Um getting a sort of some agreement on needs, I think generally speaking, our core planning group. Um is really in alignment that you've seen from those uh priority categories. Next step for us is to develop options, so it's just some facility response options um for the core planning group. Uh we'll start to estimate what the cost of some of those would be. Um and then really, we kind of analyze and evaluate those and start to generate maybe some. Bigger picture ideas about how to accomplish those things, whether it's, you know, there's there's project number one is here, and then in five years, you might do. Um kind of the second or some sort of uh general idea of how you might sort of lay out a plan to address. All those different needs in an ideal option, um we'll summarize that in a full report that'll come back to the board. Uh for a lot more questions about potential options and um certainly, there's always costs as a part of that, that. Um is something that um I know Dan and I think at some point, maybe others will be. Looking at together to understand how to uh maybe address some of those needs from a financing standpoint, so. That's kind of our update for Dan, where we're at with the study, um certainly open to. Address any questions or go back to anything and and help explain kind of um some of the background, I know we went through. A lot of those needs and things pretty quickly, but um you know, sort of what we have is background. And will be part of that final report is sort of that space by space summary, so we'll look at. Every office, every workstation, every meeting room, um that's kind of where those numbers came from, um so it's quite a bit of. Like I said, quite a bit of data, and we're just sort of scratching the surface uh for the board today, so you have that overall summary of where we're at.
Uh Mr. Kenny?
I'm on the land uh conservation committee and. We just had a meeting yesterday, so we get the reports of what they do, and the nature of their work is they do a lot of work in the Ringo area. With the farming community and mitigating runoff issues and that sort of stuff. Um as you develop plans, I would be curious to see if Ringo or hybrid might work as a site for land. Conservation, the pros and cons, talk to staff, it might be convenient for them because. It seems like a lot of what they do is right there, it might save. The public that comes in, longer drives, it might save them, you know, some time on the road, driving to that area and back and forth every day. There might be buildings down there that if they're available, might be more reasonable than in Ashland. But also then gets the presence of the county a little bit more away from one end of the county. Um and then if there's a building that has storage, maybe the snowmobile alliance, maybe the sheriff who wants some core gold storage, and then the equipment that. Land conservation has, maybe there'd be a site there that would work better collectively for all of them. And if it were in hybrid, and there was a meeting space room, maybe once in a while for highway, if they want a bigger space, that would work for them too.
Here, yeah, thank you for the insight.
Supervisor Negro?
Hello, thank you guys for the presentation, I uh I appreciate. Your skills and have been pushing for something like this for a while now, so I I'm excited about this. Whole thing, I'm just gonna say it like that whole thing, um you know. Because we have this fiduciary duty to our citizens, I like to make sure that we are trying to. Use all of the tools in our tool belt, and I I'm wondering if you have. As as you're doing this, and and once you go into this plan, are there suggestions for department efficiencies? Are there suggestions for just kind of a shuffling inside of the courthouse? Who might need different access than what they've got now, what would be more efficient for, say, the court system or the jail? I mean, how, what what is your role and what is your toolbox in 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 this process?
First of all, yes. A lot of what you said, I mean, like I said, we've um we've got uh several. County master plans and and projects we've done over our sort of fifty year history, and we use that as. Um some guidance to say where we've seen this been done before and where has it been done differently? Uh but then also a lot of it um comes back to. Uh the surveys and and the interview process that we went through with each department. Um because nobody knows how departments work better than the departments themselves. Um but our core planning group then um sort of wraps that all up into. Uh what is it that the county as a whole is trying to accomplish with those guiding principles? Um and so not only are we kind of getting direct feedback from the departments. Uh but we are using our own skill set and understanding of county operations. Uh to help potentially look at efficiencies that could be created, and. Uh that does come out in sort of what different options would be developed. Um there's always space for feedback, so um like uh Patrick, thank you for your uh suggestions, I think. Um anything else like that, we're willing to take in. Um uh ourselves and as a core planning group and sort of listen and try to incorporate that. Uh into some potential options that we might develop, because we're certainly not just gonna uh meet with the core planning group and say. Here's the option, we're gonna have several that we'll investigate and look through and. Um also look at timelines on all of those as well, so it's a um. A lengthy sometimes, but important process uh for this next step, I think.
Okay, I appreciate that, the comment I'd have to. The planning group is, I would hope that we would look for as many efficiencies and innovations. And maybe not the most comfortable changes, but maybe something that could. Lower cost and make people more efficient than some of the older processes that we have, so I. That's just what guidance I have.
Good, thank you, Laura. Any other questions? Otherwise, thank you very much for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate appreciate your time, board, and um we will be back again with more information.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to the regular agenda, we need a motion to approve the March twenty six twenty twenty five county board minutes. Is there a motion? Mr. Huber?
Second, this is Huber, I'll make the motion, accept the minute, second by the way.
Mr. Visay seconds it, any questions, changes, corrections, deletions? Otherwise, all those in favor of approving the board meeting minutes of March twenty six, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Resolution R zero four dash twenty twenty five dash fifteen oh one, resolution supporting the creation of the city of Ashen Tiff. Tid eleven.
Move to approve?
Mr. Visay makes a motion to approve, is there a second? Mr. Kenny?
I'll second.
Mr. Kenny seconds, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approved hazard mitigation plan.
Uh Mr. Chairman, can we remove this from the agenda? FEMA has asked us to change some wording in the plan.
Okay, so we table it?
Yeah, please.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
We need a motion to table the approval of hazard mitigation plan?
Ronald make a motion that we table the mitigation.
Supervisor Sendor makes a motion to table, second?
Ray will second.
Mr. Ray seconds. Questions? Mr. Visay?
I was gonna say, I looked at that last night and I was really impressed, despite the fact that it might be some changes to be made. Amazing, amazing piece of work.
Good, thank you. Do you know other questions, all those of proving the table of the hazard mitigation plan, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Ordinance zero zero four dash twenty twenty five dash one thirty one, agreement to ordinance zero eleven dash two thousand dash thirty three. An ordinance requiring documents to contain parcel identification numbers in order to be recorded. Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um because of the weird way. Um that this was, I'm trying to get to the document, um. With that previous pattern of how we use to pass things like this, do we have to redo the complete? Ordinance, I don't even know where it is right now, um. Because technically, when we used to do that whole sign up. On the piece of paper before it could make it to a vote, that wasn't exactly. Kosher, so do we have to redo the whole thing?
Uh no, we do not have to, this is fine the way we're doing it.
We, corporate council said it's okay?
Yes, and it went through zoning committee, and I've seen other counties do it the exact same way.
Well, it's. I'll call you off of the side then, um all right.
Well, corporate council did approve this, so.
Okay.
Okay, is. Is there a motion to approve?
Brad will make a motion to approve.
Supervisor Ray makes a motion.
Ronald second.
Supervisor Supervisor Sendor seconds it, questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance zero zero four twenty twenty five one thirty one, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Resolutions R zero four dash twenty twenty five dash fifteen oh two, limitations on services provided by the Ashen. County Register of Deeds Office.
Brad Ray will make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Ray makes a motion, Mr. Kenny?
I'll second.
Mr. Kenny seconds it. Questions on this? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. That, uh, should we close it?
Yeah.
Okay, we should have a motion to close the public hearing on the JFK airport.
Uh, Brad Ray will make a motion if you ask the, if there's any public before.
Okay.
So.
Here. Okay, hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
But I, I, I should, thank you. Is there anybody here or online that wants to speak to the public hearing JFK or airport before we make a motion to close it? Anyone online or here? Anyone online or here? Hearing and seeing none. Then we do need a motion to close the public hearing.
Brad Ray has moved.
Mr. Ray makes that motion.
Visay second.
Mr. Visay seconds. Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, public hearings closed. Then item F, transportation aid petition for the airport. To you? Okay. I'm just trying to find it here.
All the detail of it.
Okay, okay.
So. Well, if you wanna get the motion.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve the transportation aid petition for the airport? Mr. Blake?
Blake will make a motion to approve the resolution petition for the airport improvement aid.
Blake makes a motion.
Brad will second.
Mr. A seconds. Okay, now the, Dan, can you explain that just?
Well, I could do better than that. The airport manager is here.
Okay.
And he could explain. So Derek, you, can you come up to the table here?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, everyone. My name is Derek Hall. I'm the airport manager here in Ashland. Um, so what we submitted here basically is a, a more or less comprehensive list of improvements that we would like to see done at the airport over the next six-year period. Um, this is a standard operating procedure. Every six years, we bring forward a petition like this. And essentially we work with the Wisconsin Bureau of Aeronautics. Wisconsin is a, a channeling state where the local municipality and, and communities do not petition the FAA directly. We channel through the state. So the Bureau of Aeronautics handles that for us. So we've been working with them to set the scope of the improvements we would like to see done over the next six-year period. And after discussing with the city council of Ashland, we did redline a few items as seen on the agency agreement. Basically anything that would expand the airport footprint or possibly add more maintenance or ongoing cost to the, the airport at this time, we removed from the list. So other than that, the current project that we do have set is the number one on the proposed improvements list. The runway rehabilitation for our main runway 220. That has been set now to begin at about the middle of June. And that is the only project that we currently have fully funded and fully planned in the works at this time. The rest will of course be contingent on approvals and getting further funding in place in the future.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to add, so like every year's project, the city council and the county board have to approve these projects year by year. So if the city decides they don't want to fund project X, that current year, then it doesn't get funded. There's just merely a request that we have to send in to the FAA to make sure that we are eligible for grant funding.
Okay, good, thank you. Now, because I forgot to write this down, Heather, did we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so we do have a motion and a second to approve transportation aid petition for the airport. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Reports and updates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clerk is stating that we need to vote on this resolution ratification on the screen also.
Brad will, will make a motion to approve the resolution ratification for the airport.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor A makes a motion. Mr. Huber?
Huber will second it.
Mr. Huber seconded it. Questions? Seeing no questions. All those in favor of approving that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Administrator updates.
Okay, I just got a few things. I'll let you guys get out of here. Um, one, the CDBG planning grant that we applied for not too long ago was approved. So we'll be getting the $50,000 from the state to, for our planning process. We did apply for four earmarks with, for congressionally funded earmarks. Um, they are a new wind sled, ice angel, that's way beyond its useful life. Um, two is the radio tower upgrades for the sheriff's department. Three was a wastewater system in Melon or Jacobs. And then the fourth one, uh, that's all we did, those three. Two, uh, just to update, you might, you might be getting complaints on second landing. Uh, the water level is two, two feet lower than normal. Um, so it's using second landing at your own risk. Uh, there's a good chance you can get, if you have a bigger boat, you'll get stuck. Um, especially on the way in. They talked about the sheriff's department HVAC being needing to fix. Uh, we're waiting on a third quote for that. That issue will come up to finance committee next month. The first two quotes came in at over 700,000, just so you guys know. And then finally, the elevator is gonna finally be fixed next month. They're expecting, anticipating May 19th as the start date. Well, the work will only take a couple of days, a few days. It's gonna take another two weeks before an inspector can get here to look at it. So the elevator will be down for two to three weeks during that time period. Um, if you know people are coming here and have disability issues, please let us know and we'll try to accommodate them on the first floor, whether departments coming down or whatever we can do will help people as much as we can during that time period.
I, I just wanna make a point here about the wind sled. We want to refer to it as a wind sled because if everybody recalls, and I do, 22 years ago, when it went before Congress, it was listed as an ice angel. And all hell broke loose because they thought Ashland area was asking for all this money to put up an ice angel. And if you go back and look at history, you'll see the articles that were written repeatedly from congressmen who voted no at first. So we, we need to replace it. We need to refer to it as a wind sled. Otherwise, we'll be in the same boat we were, especially with current situation. So thank you.
Uh, I would like to say that, um, you know, we asked for our neighbor, neighbors for letters of support. Um, Bayfield County passed a resolution. Uh, Iron County is passing a resolution. And Bad River sent us a letter of support, like actually wouldn't.
But thank you. Supervisor reports. Anything from supervisors? Mr. Visay?
Um, I sort of have like two comments. Um, without regard to the political dynamics of it, you may have noted the Canadian election results. And I'm talking about the, the difference between incentive and insult having impact. And so it really appears that the Canadians were less concerned about the financial impacts and more concerned about the insult. And they, they voted on the insult. So in my thinking, the per diem paid for two and a half hour meeting, or the best people who come here and have to get incented to stand for office. The $50 per diem is not only inadequate incentive, which we all know, but also on the insult. And I would like to recommend that the finance committee, once again, take up this question so that could be adjusted following the next election. Um, the other question I have has to do with, I'd like to understand where in our county committee and administrative structure we're, we're looking at the Northland College disposition question. So those are the two points I wanted to raise.
Um, as far as pay raise goes, that would go to executive committee to make a decision. Um, and I'll be happy to put it in the agenda if the chair is, likes me to. Right now with Northland College, there's no talk of disposition until school ends. Uh, the school trustees have taken the position they have a fiduciary responsibility to the students. They will not discuss or contemplate any disposition of the college proper until after school ends. Um, they are putting up for sale ancillary properties. So like the president's house and, you know, the Maxwell properties and some other properties, you know, those are going up for sale with Coldwell Banker soon. But as far as the main campus, I mean, they haven't even gotten it appraised yet. So, and the college has to stay in existence for at least a year in case any lawsuits come up. So, um, until they're in a position to be even able to talk about anything, then I, there's not much we can do. Um, I have heard rumblings of the governor appointing a task force to talk about the disposition of it. Um, but that's just rumblings.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Kenny?
I live a block from Northland and I go for walks there. So, you know, I run into people and have some visits. I think one thing we should note is that apparently for insurance reasons, the college in the coming year after graduation is not going to allow occupancy in those buildings. So there's been a few entities that are in there now, even though they will stay in the area, they're gonna have to move out because of insurance reasons. And then in regard to our space needs study, if it's gonna take Northland a year to decide what they're gonna do or not to do with the place, there's a lot of space there, obviously. Um, and I think the space needs study should take into consideration the timeline with Northland before we make decisions or recommendations. So I'm not sure how fast they should proceed necessarily. You know, through looking at properties until we know if the Northland properties are part of what we may or may not look at.
But, and they won't be done with their process until well into the summer. When Northland can then start making decisions about what they wanna do.
Okay. Any other supervisor reports? Otherwise we need.
Yes, this is Liz Bistrana.
Yes, Liz.
Um, I'd just like to, um, take a moment to recognize Anne Whiting for what she's done for our community and, um, the grieving process for her family. Um, I just wanted to thank her, her service for our community. I mean, I first met her with the after-school program when my daughter was in school. Um, she did wonders for so many kids. And this is gonna be such a hole to fill in our society here. And then another question I had or comment is, um, the increasing homeless population and the, um, overdose population. Is that ever gonna be, um, included in that hazard mitigation study? Um, I really scrutinized that hazard mitigation study too, and that was very well done. But I'm, I'm thinking in the years to come, if we don't do anything with the population for the homeless and the, uh, addiction, um, society, we're gonna have another hazard on our hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick note too, you can mark this down. In September, on the 21st through the 24th, uh, 23rd is the Wisconsin County Association Conference in September. So if anybody would like to attend or so, if maybe they can call Heather?
Contact Heather.
Contact Heather. And it's, again, it's the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, it's Sunday, Monday, Tuesday in the Dells. It's the Wisconsin County Association Conference. Before June 1st. Contact. Okay, thank you.
So yeah, the room blocks open up June 1st. So if you could contact her before then, if you want to attend, you can still, if you make a decision later, you can still go. You just may be at a different hotel. That's all.
Okay. Seeing now, anything else? We need the most important motion of the day? Mr. Visay?
I have to correct myself. I didn't mean to insult the chair. It's not a two and a half hour meeting. It's under two hours. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Sinder? Mr. Sinder makes a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Blake?
Blake will second.
Blake seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned. Yeah.